We'll call for order, the public hearing on the close issuance of approximately eight million dollars in school instructor sales service and use revenue refunding bonds. On December sixteenth, two thousand twenty-one at five thirty P M. Call roll.
Yes, Wolf here, Rockholtz here, Coons.
Here.
Brown.
Here.
And absent is Celesta.
Thank you. Is there anyone here to speak to the public hearing? Okay, if not, we'll wait. Till five thirty-five and then we'll move on with the best agenda. So Cassie, the public hearing has to have some duration and so what we generally do is we start the public hearing. At the time of publication, then what we do is we keep it open until we get to the. Action item on the board agenda in the main meeting. So what we'll do is we won't close the public hearing, but. We'll keep the public hearing rolling and then at five thirty-five, we'll roll into the regular meeting. And then when we get to that action item, the right, because we already said action item, we'll ask for if there's anyone else to comment. If not, then we'll close the public hearing. And then we'll move into the action item for that. So. This is your first time. No, we, well, there'll be a series of public hearings on the budget, we have on bond issues. So there's a variety of reasons we have them. If we want to modify the school calendar, if we want to modify the school calendar, we'll have one. And so. So there's a variety of reasons we have them, but if you haven't had them, we just kind of follow the same process. Some people, some districts do a special meeting. Hearing and then you meet and then you take input and then you come back and you're ready to go on a different day. We find it more of a most effective use this predates me to kind of start the public hearing before the meeting and then let it ride through to the agenda. That way you give people plenty of time to. To provide their input. Rather than a, you know, because we do this as a private meeting, you know, they'll admit later than it to have known showed up, you can just hear it and move on. It's been a while, we occasionally have people to go speak. And then when they get it right in time, we'll catch them at the tail end right before we move on to the agenda. So it's nice to have them.
We're all that set.
R E C.
It's nice to look right across the street and see lights.
My dad told me nobody inside the city on this last power. I'm like, I know people inside the city on this who lost power. Yeah, my flight did not get back last night. Apparently, they said eighty mile an hour winds were, the plane was not designed to land in it. I don't know why. It says in Denver, they had, they had sustained forty mile an hour winds. Or yesterday morning. Gussie maybe up eighty-two hundred miles an hour. I was inside these the entire time I was testing, so I don't really know. Okay. We're now going to call the order of the regular school board meeting consulting for the, for December twenty twenty-one. Is mission of the school and community school district to engage each and every student in rigorous and relevant learning experience, maximize achievements through exceptional teaching. Natalie, can you call the roll again?
Sure, Rockholtz here, Wolf here, Coons.
Here.
Brown.
Here.
And absent is Celesta.
Thank you, Natalie. Welcome, everyone. We've got a full agenda. Do you want to check into that? It's registered for general public speaking. Sounds good. Celebration achievement. We have. Opus Choir Camden Lions just introduced us to start, it sounds like. Hi Camden. So what can you tell us about Opus Choir?
We wanted to bring Camden here today. Opus Choir is like being selected first team all-state in a sport. So. Quite an honor to have a student selected for that and we wanted to celebrate the hard work that goes into it. So you want to talk about maybe how you prep for it? And what the day was like that you had?
Um, there was a lot of singing.
Yeah.
I kind of just. Had to rehearse all day, then. Later that day, I had to perform with. A lot of other kids.
So to get there, to get to Opus, to get to your audition, what type of time did you put in practicing and how many songs did you have to? You know, to get selected, how did the selection process go?
I had to sing one song. And there's, it was, there's one part of one song and then. Then I had to spend a quarter.
When, when was this?
There was. Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. Did we only do it through someone that?
Yeah.
And where, where was the Opus concert?
Um, in, uh, in English.
In English.
Is this your first time?
Yeah.
And you're in eighth grade there. What, what part do you sing?
I received. Fairytale to base one.
Yeah. What was your favorite part?
Brian, the actual performance of it. It sounded really good.
So when you get selected, everyone there is Opus or everyone goes and then certain kids get, I mean, is there another? Selection process there that happens? No, you did accept it from another.
Yeah.
Four different players. Yours was. Eighth grade mixed choir then. No, just, no, no, just boys, just all the ones.
But, yeah.
There's eight and seven. Yeah, eighth and seventh grade boys, about two hundred kids on stage.
So just, just, it was just a boy choir? Yeah.
You were on a stage singing or you were?
Yeah, it was a big stage.
Did it make you fall off the choir all over again?
Not really.
She's online with me.
It was a lot of work. Did you do it again?
Yeah.
He had a lot of fun. His sister went four times since Opus choir.
Did he tell you he had to sing tonight?
So we're asking you guys. Well, congratulations.
Congratulations, Camden. Would you like me to let you sit down? Thank you, Camden. Next up is K through eight artwork.
Yeah, and this is something we talked about as an admin team. We're just so thrilled with our, our, our program in general, K, K twelve, and we have a new art teacher that's serving. Intermediate in the middle school and she's doing an outstanding job. The kids are producing outstanding projects and we just wanted to. Celebrate that and bring that to your attention. We can open this up.
If you guys have a chance to look at that, it's posted with the agenda, so it's. I'm always amazed that, I have no artistic knowledge, so I'm always amazed when I look at what they can do.
So clay and. Paint. This would be like you. And if you ever are like you. Um, that hallway, the art room and the music room.
Yeah.
Those are a joy to stop being. Those kids love it.
Are they still, once every four days, they still rotate through specials that way? Yeah, it's pretty limited.
Yeah. Is art one out of six? Or is it more than that?
Any is one, anything.
One out of five?
One out of five.
Arts one out of five.
As I know with music show, it's been really hard to get him as much content as she's wanting to this year because of just the schedule.
And then we have. Celebrity force created a beautiful facility. Display cases when you walk into the building. Shows off their own.
Very museum-like in the building, just the way she posts all the kids' artwork. It's so cool.
Feel free to.
Yeah.
She's K six. She's four eight.
Four eight.
See the art going up the glass. The whole building celebrates it, don't they?
Yeah.
Art.
It's all, it's the whole building. She's shut it out. Fifth grade work is upstairs and the fourth grade is downstairs.
Sixth grade.
So at one point, I believe there was a. They call it an art gallery walkthrough where parents could come in and kids could walk their parents through the different pieces of art that was on the wall. Just to kind of pelt ring and bridge that. That's going inside. So is that, has that been? Talked about or?
No, we have not talked about it at this anyway. I don't know that at the middle school. Um, we don't, haven't looked at any parents yet.
We're pretty excited about our fine arts and wanted to celebrate.
Yeah.
The work those kids are doing.
If we can push this out through the social, these presentations out through the social media, it'd be great. Focus on learning. Someone tagged program update. I'm guessing that's you.
You do. Okay. Are you going to share? Okay. Yep. There you go.
Thank you. So, um. Yeah, I'm excited to be able to share with you where we are with the tag program currently. Um. Over the last probably two years, especially through the. Through the time that we've had to collaborate and work together through COVID, that's given a little more time. Maybe I wasn't able to pull kids or work with kids as quickly or easily to really dig into. Um, what the state has as far as gifted education and what we're doing and what things we might need to do differently. Throughout the COVID pandemic and then moving forward, what that looks like. So to start out with. I thought I would bring to your attention the definition of gifted that the state of Iowa has listed. Um, and something that's different than what they've had in the past is really focusing on the difference between gifts and talents. Oftentimes, those are used anonymously and they really do mean two, two different things. Gifts are superior aptitudes that are like born with. And talents are things that can be developed over time. And so, you know, we really wanted to look at what are we doing to develop talent? In our students and take the gifts that they have and really provide opportunities for them to. Learn and grow in those areas. So along with that. There is a French Canadian psychologist that did a lot of work in really delineating the differences between giftedness and talent. Named Francois Gagné and through his research, he really highlights that there are different catalysts that can significantly impact. People's abilities to take gifts and over time develop them into talents. And so we've been looking at what are the. Impacts and the catalysts that we as a school district could have in a positive way to help students develop. Those gifts into talents. So along those lines, we were really thinking about. Tag as the, as the name and wanting it to be more than just saying talented and gifted. And so. We're looking at it more for talent development, academic challenge and gifted support, which really encompasses more of looking at. The child as a whole and considering their academic needs as well as emotional, emotional needs. So with that, we were really looking at the MTSS, so at multiple tiers of services. That we're implementing in the district and seeing how that also can be. Connected with gifted students. And so really looking at that tier one, how can we differentiate our content in the process and. Products and planning for advanced students. By working with individual teachers or teams. You know, we're, we're very blessed in our district to have a lot of very capable students and so trying to determine. An identification can be tricky. And so really. Placing more emphasis on what we can do to provide those opportunities for growth. And ways that we can increase the level of challenge for any student that might need it, whether they're identified as gifted or not. Is really important in that first tier. And then if that isn't sufficient enough to. Continue to have them develop and grow, then there might be a need for tier two. Type of work or a tier three, which would be more individualized. And more direct work with me as a specialist in gifted it. So we've kind of modified then what the process for identification looks like. This is the first year that we have a tag committee at each building. That's composed of administrators, myself, instructional coaches, classroom teachers and counselors, so that we're really looking at students. As a whole and not in one particular area or another. We're looking at all available data when we're considering students. Whether it's classroom teachers, assessment screeners, we've also incorporated nomination. Forms that people can fill out for themselves, their parents. Or classroom teachers and all that information would also be considered by the committee. And then the committee would look at what types of services it looks like our students would benefit most from and then which students would be identified for those services. So this year I've had more of an opportunity to do some professional development. On the October professional development day with the middle school and the high school, I was able to speak at thank you and intermediate staff meetings. I've also had the pleasure of doing some co-planning and co-teaching with some of. The teachers at the elementary level and the intermediate, especially in math. That has been really rewarding for me to be a part of and also getting into classrooms and. Working with both the teachers and students and then also attending building intervention and collaborative learning team meetings.
Carrie and I, we almost meet. Thursday mornings to really take a look at our progress that we're making. In terms of kind of revamping the program. Previously, we had a bunch of rules in order to get into talented and gifted and receive services. And really realizing that for those students who are identified as tag, really only having. Minimal opportunity because of being needing to be a part of the regular force work. And so then only being pulled out for a short amount of time that didn't really truly get at what kids needed. For gifted and talented program. So beginning of this year, Carrie and I had sat down and Carrie presented this idea of really looking at tag. As talent development, academic challenge and supporting those kids really truly that academic challenge. And then truly those kids who we would identify as gift. Knowing that gifted students who are really identified as gifted, there's probably a smaller percentage of those. Those students who really need something different. And then really thinking about the talent development piece, knowing that we have some very, like Carrie said, some very beautiful students. So how do we continue to develop those talents? But then how do we also provide within the classroom instruction those opportunities and challenge? More, more actively challenged, opportunities and tasks. And so really trying to look at. The program in terms of moving it forward and opening the doors instead of this list of rules of who can get in, who can't get in. And I really like the progress that we're making in terms of developing these teams in each building to have more conversations collaboratively around. What kid, what do kids really need who may be way more advanced? And, and also helping teachers like with Carrie being in some co-plan and co-teaching math right now. Helping teachers see the whole spectrum of students and what they might need. In terms of where they might be struggling, but also all the way to, okay, well, let's look at how we're designing destruction. To help support those kids to really reach that high ceiling. So like with our literacy, like elementary, especially with literacy. And math, it's a low floor, high ceiling, really trying to help those kids who want to reach that high ceiling get there. And that's where we're really trying to experiment with Carrie, be doing more co-teaching to get to know what's really happening in the classroom.
I'm coming to students all to that category and with the change that we made this year.
Well, so it's, and that's something that in each of the committees, you know, Ben talked about that this is kind of, this is kind of muddy water. You know, this is a, this is a new process and new and trying to figure out how that all works. So I, I don't have a clear cut answer for you right now. With these changes, we just started meeting as a committee to go over data and seeing what additional information do we need before we can make decisions. So that's kind of where we are currently this year.
I would, I would imagine that if, if it comes into more of a flexible learning model inside the classroom, that you would fluctuate. Students potentially in and out of the classroom setting. Well, not in the classroom, but within the category that it fits.
Absolutely.
Right. Depending, you know, there's not, you might excel in one area.
Right, right. And not another. Exactly. Well, and that was the other piece of that puzzles. We were really trying to figure out how do we. Provide challenge for students on a daily basis and not two times a week. You know, however long they get pulled out. And, and like you said, kids may fluctuate in and out and having that consistent evaluation of. Where are they? What, what needs do they have and what are we doing to meet those needs?
From an, sorry, from an achievement level. Is there, is there like some sort of measure of success that we would, that we're trying to obtain? By, by making these changes, we hope to see a difference. When it comes to student achievement, we expect higher test score. These are, they're too, and that's worse, but I'm just saying as an example, like I don't know if it's working or not.
You know, and, and some of it, I, I think from. From at least one vantage point that I have. I think too often, some of our more capable students. Don't have to put forth a lot of effort to be successful. And so how do we do a better job of having higher. Higher standards, higher expectations for what they're, what we're asking them to do so that they can learn more of those skills and it's less of a problem when they leave. Our high school. Because I think for some of, some of the kids that, that I work with, it's when they leave, that's a bigger problem because they aren't just able to. Do their work the way they have.
Right, the right skills that they.
Right. Exactly. So, I mean, I would see that as being something that would be interesting to, to look at.
I see a correlation between that and what you present at that school. Critical thinking skills that happen with them.
Yeah, I'm curious supporting that right now. It's in the co-teaching that she's doing at the grade that says, I'm sure.
It's also a strong formation because we're exploring, going down this path and identifying what we see as a portrait of a graduate to. That really fits into that as well. Want them to be prepared for post-secondary success, whatever that might be. And by identifying, you know, we want them to be able to persevere, problem solve. And if, but if they're not academically challenged and this is easy, then all of a sudden they go out into the real world, oh, you know, they hit a wall. How do you get over that compadre? Program and know those kids were truly gifted or advanced learners to continue to push themselves as learners.
This is your chance to ask the question now.
Well, one of the things that her and I have talked about in the past is if we don't challenge kids, they rest. And so if, if they, let's say their talents are here, the gifts though change, but they're not developed from their talents, they actually go in this direction. And so I think it's important and it's one of my things I'm not, I'm going to, you know, exact a little bit, I mean, yeah, but it's more, right? So I know that kids are like that practically. They have a drive to be the best. They have a drive to be. Now, I'm going to speak from an N of one, my son in my house. Who could have cared less about being the best academic student? You know what I mean? And, and I don't know if that's a culture piece. I don't know if that's a, but those are the, that's. That's the part I'm trying to get my hands around. Like how do they embrace music in, in athletics? But then don't embrace academics, you know, because in, at least in the athletic world, some work that. You know, in the athletic world continues. And so, and then it's always been just one of those head scratchers for me, how do we engage those kids? To want to challenge themselves to be great. And because a lot of times, I mean, and it was a lot made of Gerber too. They would choose the easy classes. They would, you know, it wasn't always that they were challenging themselves. So I don't know the answer to that. I. You know, I think it's as a district, I think it's something that we, everything to wrap up right around some, I don't know if anybody has the answers to that. How do you go to the high school students?
And, and it's a conversation to portrait a graduate.
Right.
And what skill set do we want our kids, you know, what level of math, what level of like, you know, writing, what level of communication? But also what level of resiliency, what level of, and these other factors that we have to put into our instruction.
Right.
And put into our native lessons.
Well, I think those are the ones I've actually said several times. What would these kids do if they weren't afraid to get the better credit? You know, you know, you know, they're so protected at this grade point average, what would they challenge themselves to do, you know?
And then you think for some of the, the higher ability students too. Because they haven't had to put forth a lot of effort. Because they haven't had to put forth a lot of effort at times, then there's some discomfort if they do have to work. Then maybe they're not what everybody thinks they should be. And so they're trying to live up to teachers' expectations of them or parents' expectations of them. So it can be easier to kind of hide some of that, just for that fear of not measuring that.
I'll stay in the high school for another moment and we'll, we'll end up in the conversation. But one of the jobs I talked about, I guess, you know, you've got these rigid, and you've got to take these, the state says you've got to take these classes, these course areas. And one of these we've talked about is, you know, how do you advance? So if you've got a student who's kind of can learn on their own, they're kind of, they're not necessarily challenged because, you know, it's, it's so easy for them and we've got, well, this semester you've done this. It's like, well, I could do this in, in a quarter because I can just go through the material much quicker. And so one of these we talked about is, you know, what are the mechanisms for facilitating that? You know, talk to one, type of one school that's, you know, they allow students to do independent learning over the summer where they can knock out a course on their own and then they post-test on it and they get credit for it and then they can move on to a different course. So what are we thinking about the high school in terms of, you know, moving them along so that they reach material that's more challenging to them rather than something that is easier for them to tackle? And maybe they get bored because the pace is slower than what they would like or need. So I think that's a, that's a systematic question. How do we, how do we do that and still comply with all the state rules or? Yeah, that's, they're, they're way around it. There's just, you know, this is an independent course of the summer. And once you learn the material and test out it at the end, then you're done. But it's a this teacher assigned to it who's checking in with them over the summer and weekly, I think that's what I remember. Just, it all came down to test at the end. It's some new material.
We had a check to read a little bit of the convention for the learning of that word.
Yeah.
Correctly speaking to what you're talking about.
I started reading it. One of these off on holiday. I mean, I've got lots more, you know. Thank you. Admin report. This is Holtz. You're up next.
I just wanted to give an update on the Graham Lester job embedded PD that we had. Those were really, really great two days of learning. So I just have a couple of slides here for some highlights and what came onto that for us. He was able to work with all K through five teachers. We miraculously were able to pull off a lot of the stuff covered in the classrooms to allow teachers to do that. A lot of people were flexible for the day to do that. So good news to all those people that stepped in and covered classrooms. I think at one point Josh had two classrooms.
I did. I did two secondary classes. We made it on the line.
That's right, right? But he did. He was able to go into each classroom and model 25 to 30 minutes or so of instruction using one of what he calls a three act task, which goes along with the same mindset philosophy that he perspectives is. That developmental approach and how we can help kids build that fluency in math without being subject in the instruction and step-by-step procedures. And then the real meat of it all was the brief session. That was an hour long for each group of teachers after the modeling session. So he had given them a 15 minute kind of precursor to, here's what you're going to see. I thought he was purposeful too in the fact that he had asked, where are you currently at? What are you currently learning? And he picked one of his tasks that then aligned with what the kids were already working on, already done. Then when they came out, they keep reading for about an hour and teachers had the opportunity to ask them questions. I think the biggest piece out of it was that encouragement for teachers and that one, we're doing the right work. And then, you know, they were asking a couple of questions. He was familiar with and has talked with Kathy Loznot, who is the guru of perspectives. And he and Kathy have talked a lot too. And he shared some of his conversations that he's had with Kathy about the landscapes of learning. And there was just a lot of really good connections that were made there and good questions by teachers too. Just thinking about, you know, if my kids are doing this, they're constantly doing this, how do we get them to the next level? And again, that was encouragement from Graham to our teachers too, that they're working in the right path and doing the right thing. And so it just was a really, really great day of learning. Lots of really positive feedback from the teachers too. Just the time and opportunity to learn together within the job and not something extra on top of it was really great work too. I think you probably got more feedback too from the teachers.
I did, just in informal conversations, just said, some of the best professional development I think I ever have is a comment. Almost verbatim, because it really goes along with the philosophy of where we're trying to have this professional development is more job-based professional development. On-site with kids training. I mean, these pictures speak volumes in terms of, I mean, he was in the classroom. He was engaging with kids and teachers were observing how he was engaging with kids and the types of engagement strategies that he's using. I just, I said in this, I'm a third grade classroom, third grade teachers were just like bending my ear hole. Can we, can we hire him like full-time? He can, you know, just, they were just super excited. So it was just a fun buzz in the room.
We do have an empty classroom, so.
Thank you. And I saw, I saw positive Twitter posts that evening. So when I was on Twitter, I saw lots of Twitter posts from our staff about their excitement on that topic. So. Thank you. This is Holtz.
Yeah, I will say Josh and I've been spending a lot of time in Lakeview recently and, and I was in a first grade room. I just walked into the first grade room and the teacher put on the board, she was talking to, if I, if we have eight boys in the class and we have nine girls in the class. How many students do we have in the class? And I was all set in my head, my wheels start turning, you know, for the answer in my head, but I was all set to see, you know, fingers coming out and all that. But before I could even blink, there's this loud blur. Seventeen. To how the, how did they come up with that so quickly? And so then the teacher goes, all right, get your whiteboards out and I want you to, I want you to talk at your table and tell your, tell your table how you came up with that. And I just, I looked down and one student goes, well, we know that eight plus eight is 16. So just add one, that's 17. So this new perspective is again, it's teaching kids to, to get to the answer different ways. And I tell you what, and, and different ways works for different kids. But I was just amazed at just how, just quick they, they came up with that. And then they just told their colleagues, their old first grade peers, how they came up with it. So, and they had different ways. But they were going around the table and sharing. So it really is a, I stayed for a while. It was, it was good. So anyway, so another good news, I know, you know, with the struggle of substitutes, as today we actually had two extra subs. And it's like, hmm, what should we do with these two extra subs? And so we did, we doubled up, put them in some classrooms. Just to help out with, you know, certain teachers that just, you know, could use some extra helpers at times. So we're, we've been in good shape there lately. We do have some that we just said, come every day. And no matter what, we will find something for you to do. And so that's helped for those emergency purposes where a teacher may have a child that, you know, gets sick at four o'clock in the morning, never convenient. But we're, we're prepared for it and we have been. So we've really reduced the, the number of times we are asking our employees to cover for others, which is nice. That's been a positive. One quick thing, I, I handed you this and I attached the Iowa department kind of summary because I knew Cassie would have. So I went ahead and included it. Yeah, there's more information that, that's coming out. This, this information was just released from embargo. So we'll be putting more out. We'll also be, I feel like, let me, let me, if I put this in my own chart, just there's, we'll, we'll send out the website and you can explore all day long on it. I know Zach has spent some time on the high school.
I think you sent the website earlier this week. I tried to access it on my phone.
Okay.
Not a good idea. Just in case you're wondering, it's very hard to read anything on that.
So Iowa has a, a school performance profile. There's different categories, achievement, growth, various things. And you can see on this rating, all the way from exceptional to priority at the very bottom. You can see the scores. I went ahead and put in the scores. So if you have a 66.3.1 and above, you're considered exceptional. There were 1.4% of the schools that met, that reached that score. Those are schools, not districts. If that, uh, school, so you can see in 2018, you know, we had one that was down. We only had basically in 2018, one school that was high performing, the middle school. And so part of our strategic plan, a goal was, we're going to get all of our schools to high performing. And you can see in 2021, the most recent report that came out, we're just short of one of our schools and by very little. Intermediate came in at 60.28 and we needed to get 60.61. So a fraction of a score.
Would it be safe to say that the 2018, if I was to kind of draw a line, because I think 2018, 2019, probably the tab did in 2020. Did they, did they come out with it anyways?
Nineteen and 20 is the same data. And they don't have the conditions for learning from 20, got into the 20 report, the other data from 20.
This is, this kind of goes through a little, they had to recalculate them.
Yeah, it's because I, I just, one of the news articles says, just talked about the fact that overall in the state, there was a downward shift from, it was a downward shift in terms of learning loss associated with COVID from the data pre-COVID to the data from last year. So.
So yeah, we're a fraction off of meeting our goal of all schools in the high performing. So of course, you know, we're going to raise our goal and that we're going to, you know, we're going to work to get all of our schools to the exceptional. Now, we do have, and we've been talking to the past COVID ran us, but we had plans to really dissect this data. And Josh has secured our school improvement consultant from the AEA. They work closely with the Department of Ed to come down and really help us dig into some of these factors. Uh, one question that we have, and if you look at our data, where what holds us back is growth. Well, one, we have high proficiency. So the growth then becomes a challenge because our growth isn't as, as wide or as, as much as, as others. But our question is, what is, what is holding us back in growth? Why are we are not scoring higher in that growth category? Is it, and we don't know this, and this is what we want to dive into. Is it students that are, struggle with proficiency and we're not getting adequate growth or a year and a half or whatever growth out of them? Or is it the kids that are 90% proficiency already? Are we not getting growth out of them like we should? We don't know that yet. We got to dig into that data to determine what is it we need to target? So that we can get to the exceptional category. And so that's going to be the work we started in January. Is dissecting more into this data so that we can better identify, why aren't we at the exceptional, which we all feel we should be? There's no reason we can't get there. So what, what, what is it that's holding us back so we can target that?
I guess the one question possibly, when the state started, this was the whole question of ours. Because the first year they had to revamp what they were doing because it wasn't measuring exactly what they thought. I guess the question still goes back. Because we set our district goals. So one of the questions is, as we align our goals and our priorities, how do they relate to what they're measuring? So we as a district have said, you know, we prioritize these things and part of it could be that, you know, where we're at based on educational achievement. What we're trying to do doesn't necessarily align with what the state is saying is a one-size-fits-all report card on districts. And so that would be interesting for me to know more on, you know, where is there, is there a mismatch between what they're and what we're, what we're trying to do? So how does it align with each other?
I know one of the factors is post-secondary where it's somewhere in that they were, it's within that category of post-secondary, we're a little bit below the state of what we would expect. State average, I think. So that's an area we don't look at a lot. What, what is it within that?
What, what, and I could, I could not, yeah, on my phone, I couldn't figure out what they, what, what they were actually measuring. I'm like, this measure needs to be.
Measuring ACT participation, SAT participation, ACT scores, SAT scores, I mean, CTE concentrators. That's all that they're measuring. So it's not if they're rolling in school, it's not if they're continuing a year after school. It's those three indicators. And what is the, your tech education?
Since the region schools don't require, haven't required the past couple of years, our eight, eight kids to take ACT.
This will be the first real year.
I wonder if that, how that'll impact, if that'll impact on participation. Yeah.
Any questions?
So growth, are they only measured in the state assessment?
No, it's just, it's just, just.
Yeah, you're, you're, yeah, I know. That's, that's what I'm saying is we've got our priorities being as a district. It's like, sometimes you always want to score well, but you know, we don't want to shift our priorities to, is a district have just to.
We should look at them.
Yeah.
And, and look at their priorities and look at our priorities.
May, maybe they align. Maybe it's something that, you know. Yeah, yeah.
And then we just have to make an determination of, you know, is it worth trying to devote effort and towards doing something as a district to have not prioritize? Because I don't want, I don't want to just chase it because the state says it's important, but it's not what's right for our students.
Curiosity wonders how our results from the state assessment compare to results from other assessments that we get and what is other data points and are they, are they correlation between the two or are they? Because motivation is a factor in any student's taking or like a state assessment because they don't really understand why they're taking it. There's nothing in it for them to take it. So motivation factor in doing well on those assessments is, it's a great, so.
The one on the other side is in theories, you're comparing across, you know, at least the relative things, those motivation.
Well, the motivation question.
Yeah, it's somewhere difficult to get up to that higher level, but you're, at least when you compare it to state average, it kind of gives you an idea. Okay. Well, I think we look forward to hearing more back on that. And you guys did the data, I assume, after the event thing gets a chance to do it. We'll, we'll hear more back on that. Next up on the agenda is the board of the updates. That one up. So you're, so we've got the budget committee, which is Cassie and Dan.
We're gonna meet with at in January.
Waiting for you to respond.
I know.
I think the targets, again, we can adjust as soon as it's, but what we've been suggesting was kind of a, a report. So what we're trying to think of is, wouldn't, wouldn't it make sense for us to schedule things out to the board? And so we were thinking February and October will be good tax reports. We're gonna meet in January. February and October seems like a good time to report back to where we're at. Because that leads us into the budget planning. Because obviously that the 2022, 2023 budget tax rates, it's going to come out and then obviously they ended up bonding capacity moving forward. That will be another thing that falls in our play in terms of what, what, what capabilities there. So buildings and grounds is Jamie and I. And we, December, early January. And what we're looking at there is we generally historically kind of report out in January, May kind of for, as we look at summer projects and what the impact is there. And then kind of September as we head into the school year in terms of what we're at, building grounds. One of the things that we're working on this year is the facilities plan and a potential facilities task force this year. And then obviously summer projects and how those get scoped in and prioritized with the other team. Board negotiations is Adam and I. Historically, that committee meets largely in December through March. And so we'll report periodically during that time period. Board policy is Cassie and Adam. And I think we'll be looking at this November and April for, for our report outs for that to generally in November, which we've already done past, but April will be the big one because we try to wrap up any policy at the end of the year.
Well, I'd like the 700 series to go through.
Yeah, 700, 800, 900 series are the ones we've got this year.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And so Chris will, Chris will get those out to you where here's the policy and then here's any revision that ISP is suggesting or making.
The other ones will be anything else. The other thing will come out of that, but we, anything that's changed.
Oh, it's the best.
So, so the process generally there's, you know, we have to go through the ones where the. So so the process generally there's, you know, we have to go through the ones where the, you know, legal, where there's a legal change. We wanna go ISP's language, whether we wanna make something district specific. Um, and then the other ones are, we just have to touch each one. So you guys went through as a committee and reviewing each one and then. If there's things that that have to be changed, you guys make a recommendation. Um, and then we push those forward.
David, it's really the way that those two.
Oh, definitely.
Yeah, so they go through before we go through.
Yeah, and make suggestions or we make recommendations, and you'll go through them and.
It's a good, it's a good process.
Do you want that to be presented at the April meeting?
It's a it's a two double readings. Generally, April's kind of the tail end of it. Uh, April, May is kind of the first and second reading generally, so. Uh, unless Chris gets motivated and tells us we're doing it in the fall, in which case we do them in November and December, but generally not following an election year, so. So next, so next year, the board on policy may wind up with it in November because Chris gets motivated and.
Talk, yeah, and talking to Chris today, she she has those series laid out. She said when we come back from Christmas break. Um, we'll get through them. We'll get into you into January, and then you've got the time. Then we can go to first reading. In what, February?
April's kind of the tail end of.
Yeah.
It all depends on how. Well, it all depends on how quickly you guys through it. So it could be earlier, but no later than April, so. Um, it's three series. Some of them are more complicated than others, and some areas, there's more. Stuff that has to be done. You know, a lot depends on what the state legislator did the year before, so. And so it depends on how much is there. You guys were kind of dictated, but you know. No later than April will be where we want to do that first read. And so generally, it might be as an informational item in March and then in April and May, we knock it out. Um, twenty eighty agreement is Jamie and Tim, and we need to reach out. There's no set report back on that. We need to meet with the city annually. And we need to reach out to them. And so, uh, well, the things you got there are the SRNA, uh, the shared fuel used. And then future plans for the community center, the three topics that are on our agenda for the year. Um, and then the wellness committee is Dan and Jamie. Uh, and I've got report outs in March and October, so you guys have a while, but you know, a lot of your work is kind of geared over the over the year. Um. Uh, and your views and progress on mental health, nutrition, physical activity, fitness, and then also the. We're not in a policy review here for wellness, are we? We are a po- we are in a policy review year. Um, so. So that will also, so they'll come, wellness committee has to review the pol- the wellness policy, and then that will come to the policy committee. So Dan, you get a double hit on that one. Um, and so it really is is a. Yeah, so. And I can, I, Chris, I'll I'll share this with Chris on, I'll share this with Chris, I'll give this to Natalie, and then I'll share with her electronically. Because I forgot to email her. And she can share that one with kind of with that. So any thoughts, comments, concerns? It's it's gonna be a busy year, so we're just uh trying to stay on top of things. So, um, next up on the agenda is consent agenda. Is there anything anybody wants to pull on the consent agenda? Hearing none, I will entertain the motion.
Motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion, motion by Coons for some, to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Second by Wolf. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, motion. All those opposed? Abstained, motion carried unanimously. Action items. Uh, is there any further public comment on the? Public commentary. Hearing none, I will entertain the motion to close public comment. So motion by Coons. Second by Rockles. Uh. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed. Same motion carries unanimously. Uh, we will now move on to entertaining the resolutions supporting. Positsure it's approximately either eight million dollars in sports structure sales service and use after refunding bonds. Uh, I need someone to introduce the adoption of the resolution. Just, we all have to do, it's just a, you have to move the adoption of the resolution.
Uh, move to the adoption of the resolution.
Motion by Coons.
Second.
Second by Wolf. Discussion. Other than we think it's good to save a couple hundred thousand dollars in interest, uh, and there's as much else to say. Natalie needs to call roll.
Uh, do they need to say yea or nay?
Uh, whether it was the iron, a or not, a yes, yes or no, whatever they wanna say.
Okay, roll call, cool. Yes. Rockles, yes. Coos.
Yep.
Row.
Yes.
And Holista is absent.
Sorry, I have things to fill out because, you know, Chris has told me I have to fill it out, and if I don't, I will get in trouble. Um, I will, so I declare the resolutions according to proposed issuance of approximately eight million dollars in sports and structure sales service. And use for refunding bonds approved on this date. Um. Next up is modify modify the law of growth, drop off prevention resolution. The amount of two hundred forty two thousand dollars and two hundred, two hundred forty two thousand short eighteen dollars. Um, just a reminder, this is not actually money. This is money we've already spent. And it's been a long beyond what the state provided funding for us to do this activity. And what we're trying to do is recover the spending authority for the money we've already spent. Does that make sense? Okay. It never makes sense ever. Um, but we know it is forever. We we come to understand the fact that this is what we do so that. In the future, if we wanted to spend money that we don't have, we could, we could, we could borrow it and spend it. Um, and then find some way to pay it back. Um, so that's. What it is. Um, just as a reminder, uh. Spending authority is, from a state standpoint, if spending authority gets to zero, that's very bad if the state comes in and takes over. That's what we try to avoid in life, so, um, we're not anywhere near that, but. That's what we're entertaining here. Um, Davis, anything else to say on that front?
No, if you look at the the number last year, there was, uh, that was based upon seventy one kids. Uh, this year it's based on ninety one kids and how we come to that, it's potential. Dropouts. The state gives us kind of some criteria. We use that criteria and we identify that number. Um, truancy, attendance, failing grades. Uh. Um. Those are the main factors we use at um. Six twelve, and then we take three uh grades key. Five, we basically target third grade and will get proficiency. Any child below, substantially below in reading, we tag them. That's in research is shown to be one of the number one indicators of high school graduation. Is your reading ability in third grade. So.
A quick question, David.
Yeah.
What does this money go to? What sort of sports?
Um, intervention.
Okay.
Intervention, yeah, but.
It's true.
Yeah, we we do have some at-risk money that we get, and you know, we use that with. Um, intervention, reading intervention of the elementary, middle school. And we use it for um at-risk position at the high school. We're using some of it, more of it. Um, at the, we we have a halftime at-risk position. That we uh combined with TLS that we're using at the middle school. So that's where the money is. Yes, oh, definitely, yeah.
The, remember you mentioned Davis with ninety one? Six and twelve?
Mm-hmm. Well, so.
What do they constitute as dropouts?
Potential.
Potential.
So we're looking at variables that could lead. That's why we look at.
These are dropouts.
These aren't dropouts at all. Just potential. So we're taking, we're just using the state's criteria. So if a student has poor attendance.
Sure.
You know what? We're gonna tag them. That's the each other criteria, so there's potential. Um, truancy, uh, failing math or reading, or failing grade, uh, failing the subject. Of course, subject in uh at the middle school or high school. Uh, we also included. Um, we have a strong student assistance team at the high school, their cases. So if a student's referred to that team for various reasons, whether it's failing grade or truancy or. Um, what are the reasons? Uh, substance abuse, mental health support. We we.
So based on that formula, ninety.
Ninety one kids.
Number is ninety one and then based on state funding for that. Spending authority.
Yes.
What we get that up to.
Yeah, because there's a, yeah, so we got. Yeah, it but it doesn't cover, it's what what we're doing is we've spent two hundred forty two thousand dollars above beyond what the state would have given us for that. With what they said, we should have spent out of our seven thousand, seven hundred and. Dollar per student because it's what, point zero two five or whatever.
Point zero two five.
Yeah.
Of that, point zero two five. You can see uh the current and the year before. That's just a snapshot of what's taken off the DE website when we had to do our report.
And we spend. We spend what we need to. And so.
We spend all of our lot.
Yeah, yeah.
And more.
And more, yeah.
Yeah. Over that.
Okay, I need to, there's no other questions. I need the motion to approve. Drop off prevention resolution. Motion by Wolf.
Second.
Second by Rockles. A initial discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Same, motion carries unanimously. Okay. Our favorite topic, physical education waiver. Josh, you're up. I'm assuming you're up, or is it, or is it Zach this year?
Okay.
That team is.
Thank, thank. So uh just within the handout, um, just the information. Iowa chapter twelve, um, or chapter twelve that I will code. Requires all physically able students shall participate in a physical education program for a minimum of eight units. Which is nine hundred minutes during the semester they are enrolled. However, because we're in a block schedule. Kids are not necessarily, not all kids are able to um attend. Um, PE class all year round, basically. Uh, most of our kids can can meet that that PE requirement in one quarter, one semester. Um, however, there are, there have been some changes um over the course of the last couple of years. Um, to help get us, I think, closer to what the question has been, is our kids being physically active? Um, all year round, um, through sports, other activities, as well as as PE class. Um, currently, if you look at the additional information um at the bottom. Uh, we have a hundred and eighty six students enrolled in PE and one hundred fifty nine students enrolled in advanced PE. Uh, PE credit is no longer, uh, as it had been in the past few years. Um, offered for students participating in the edge, um, just to make sure kids are engaged and. Here, here, um, we've added an additional point seven five FTE. Teachers um in the district or at the high school to bring us to two point uh old FTE. Zach, you wanna speak to a number of kids who may be taking um PE credit all year long? And their quarters is it music terms?
Yeah, be anybody who's involved in both vocal and internal music, they take PE all year long. Um. Based on their schedule during that first block. So they're in, and it's um. Sometimes it's two days a week, sometimes it's three days a week, it just depends, for about forty five minutes. Um, so those students are in all year, but the ones that take their PE credit, um, kind of in a normal way, it's only for one quarter. So the other three quarters, I mean, they might be involved in other activities. Um, but to me, this code and the Healthy Kids Act. Students are supposed to be physically active. Um, but we're supposed to apply for this waiver. Um, through through the Iowa Department of Education to. To make sure that they know that we're not doing this on purpose, it's part of our schedule. It's nice to know that we have probably kids involved outside. As well during.
Yeah, I'm sorry, um, and talk, uh, we have Casey put these numbers together. We have four hundred and sixty two kids at the high school. Four hundred and eighteen are involved in an extracurricular, which is ninety percent of our kids.
So just to know, this is data, this is information from last year, since we have a full year information from last year, just to give a a full picture.
Baseball's more right.
And baseball's. So as we look at, they have, based on percentage last year, we had ninety percent of kids involved in some sort of activity. Whereas the previous time, we really looked at this in two thousand nineteen with eighty four percent. And I know we were just, we were. Um, during that time, really talking about how do we continue to move that needle forward and getting more kids. Um, involved in different activities. And also we included not just sports, but you know, kids who are involved in marching band. Band music, uh, musical is very active uh for kids during those different seasons. So we wanted to make sure we included some of those numbers in there as well. Um, and then as we look at um non-participants, obviously ten percent. And then two thousand nineteen, we had sixteen percent who were not part, quote unquote, not participants. Um, however, as we look at during that time, we didn't, not all kids were taking PE during the year because we had. During the summer. So there are some shifts of where kids are being more physically active. Um, and again, these are, these are approximations. We don't know. I mean, we may still have a handful of kids that really just aren't. Involved in any activity at all uh within the school setting.
When do we get the next hour of this survey?
We got last year, right?
Okay. Did we look at that? Because that that was one of the things that triggered our. Part of this discussion, which is we had, we had, you know, about ten percent that had reported no physical activity in preceding thirty days. Um, and that that was probably triggered, this is, you know, the the challenge we had, so. Um, the state requires this, and the board has to has to assert that. We have a reason, the kids are meeting the physical education requirement, uh, so they're learning the material. And then we have to attest to the fact that we're, our our process ensures students are still getting forty five minutes of physical activity a week. Uh, throughout the school year. And that that was where the the rock came, because I think we're providing the educational use of it. It's just, you know, what can we do uh to continue to move the needle on that? And I think we've done a great job of collecting data. But in case that we're we're gonna be trying to target students that maybe are not as physically active. Finally, is, you know, are we just missing them? Uh, because one of the things is, because we don't necessarily know that, you know, that's done in the spring, right?
The, I would, I survey, you know, uh, we just took it this fall.
Fall, okay.
We have, we have some numbers, but I can, you can look back and get some information.
Yeah, because I I just don't remember where we're at with that, because I know that was one of the things that triggered it when we had the initial discussion many years ago. It's just. Is that eleventh graders?
Uh, it's.
The vice board is, yeah.
Yeah, so it's just. I know, but for this, the P waiver only applies to high school students. It was just for a snapshot. And so that's one year of eleventh graders. And so it's like. You know, what does this really tell us? And so I think, uh, you know, I think, I think we commend the. The district of the high school for 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 tracking this stuff and trying to make progress on it. And we continue to. To just pull it out and have that discussion uh about where we're at and and where we're heading, you know. Um, for that. Word perspective, the story that's been, we're happy to apply for this waiver as long as we know we're. We're making efforts to make sure that we're meeting that. We're making efforts to meet that forty five minutes of physical activity per student per weekend. Uh, I think I did want to note, you know, we had the discussion in the, it's in that report, which is, you know. We are looking at intermural opportunities to maybe give students who might not be involved in a sport, other opportunities to be physically active. Uh, but that kind of got hit with COVID and some of the efforts to do that. And what was it? Maybe Zach, was it like basketball and volleyball were a couple of things that Casey was throwing around. Kids expressed interest in drink at the. In a in a mural sort of way, and those are the things that we can look at moving forward to just.
We had an intermural model last year.
How how did that work?
It's okay until the sponsor really rolled their ankle a little bit.
Okay.
Okay.
So, questions for?
I know one of the other things is actually. Strategy, but not, not just openly, just signing off on individual. Not actually, just like an old. Like check.
Yeah, the the law allows um just students away one year of their physical education. Um, and that was pretty, I'd say, loose. I mean, upwards of fifty to eighty kids that would waive it. Whatever, they'd have multiple open blocks, and so kind of tighten it down to just. They have a full academic load, and maybe they can't fit it in their schedule, or receiving a year, and they don't wanna take it, that's okay. They grab like three kids so far this year, so it's not, it's not very good.
And we had talked at one point in time, I think, about, you know, kids who maybe haven't gotten low and, you know, stripped in it, but. You know, but we're talking about walking cars and you're welcome. Go later time now, right, get trapped in the high school.
Yeah, and and both of our P teachers have done a nice job this year. Some of those students that would have elected to to waive it, they've gotta create their own plan, and so they're. The course expectations through that self designed.
Doesn't have to check the P E box, but those guys can help us check that that box for all students. Probably something that we should talk about in our health and wellness. Cassie, questions on the process? I just wanna say, I appreciate I am the best to you to make the effort on this and give us the data that makes us comfortable just to approve it. I think last year, we were behind the eight ball, and with everything with COVID, it just kind of went into consent agenda. And so we all kind of reviewed it, but we didn't take time at the board table to talk about it, but yeah. Even when last year, you guys had done a good job on dating together, despite the challenges, and so. I just wanted to publicly say thanks for the efforts on this, and.
For sure.
I'll entertain a motion.
Second.
Second by Wolf, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next up, we move on to information on this close calendar for twenty twenty two, twenty, sorry, twenty three, twenty four school year. Davis?
Yeah, so. We. What we do is, you know, we're planning two years ahead, so we roll the calendar over. Go to all corresponding dates, and then we look and try to adjust and fix things accordingly. It it's very, yes. A lot of advantages to end the semester for the high school in December. Which poses a challenge because of the number of days offside, the lopsidedness, so. If, as we look down the calendar, we tried to adjust some things, you can look. The calendar is posted in here, but I polled specific data points. And the traditional column is. Just a straight rollover, basically from every year previous, the past four or five years. Or more, you can see each quarter, forty one, forty two, forty six, and fifty one, so you know, between first quarter and fourth quarter, we have. Ten days. Start date. That's dictated by the state, so the twenty third is the first day we can start. What I wanted to just throw out there today is informational. You know, we've done a good job cleaning up the calendar, moving everything to Thursdays as far as parent teacher conferences and things like that, so parents know. Outside of breaking for a vacation. Early outs are always on Thursdays, and we try to avoid any other day for any other reason unless we're breaking for a vacation. So we're putting that up, graduation, you can see down below in the traditional calendar, we have a hundred and eighty days. We count those two parent teacher conference days, so technically students are a hundred and seventy eight, but it's a hundred and eighty days. We submit our calendar based on hours. We need a thousand eighty, you can see we have a little cushion there, which we do every year.
So, and that would be, I mean, we just, snow days and stuff, those hours disappear.
Well, what we try to do is, we'll make up all days, what we try to do is, unless we have to go into that second week of June. There's, three years ago, I think we said, let's, there's two days, let's just forgive that day.
We have to make it up either at the end of the year or.
Yeah.
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 So way back, when we went through this process, and the state gave districts an option. Yeah, and we report officially in hours to the state, we chose that method. But we still build our calendars based on days, and that was, and the board at that point, and obviously future boards are up, can make. Make choices as we look at the calendar. But we we talked about the importance of having those days in the classroom, so we wanted to continue to maintain a hundred and eighty days. Rather than shorten down the calendar, so we had only just enough days to get to the thousand eighty hours.
So, just, and and it helps too, because our teachers are contract contracted for a hundred ninety two days. So to fulfill the contract, we have a hundred and eighty student days, seven professional development days. And then we do have five holidays mixed in with the pay for the contract. So. One idea we had, just to float out there to discuss, would go away from the hundred and eighty days. To try to even out. So, I mean, it would just bias up on this. Top part, you can see quarter four is reduced to forty nine days. Not a big deal, but you know, eight, eight day difference from quarter one and ten day difference. What we would do is take those two days that typically students would would have in class. We would put it on the teacher contract and have two additional days prior to school starting. So it would not impact parents, you know, in the middle of February, taking another day off, and they've gotta find childcare. It would be all pre-workshop, those two days would be pre-workshop, we have three in our calendar now. Last year when we had DeRachio, we did some things and we added two more, giving us five. We got a lot done in five days, and it wasn't a fire hose turned on full, but it would kind of spread things out, and we. We had a lot of upfront P D and work to be, to really roll into the school year, so the proposal. If we wanna do something a little different, instead of, instead of with the teacher contract. A hundred and eighty days, it would be a hundred and seventy eight days, nine professional development days instead of seven, and the five holidays. So, just something to think about, I know it was, we got a lot of time as the admin team, we talked. And and the teachers were appreciative, prior to school starting, we had to try to pack everything we needed to pack in in three days. It also last year provided us time to do some bootcamps. So what we call them, for new teachers coming in and giving them a crash course on. Here's our workshop model for writing, let's let's spend a half a day and really help you set that up, go through it. Here's our reading, it would be our new math perspective, perspectives curriculum. Maybe standards based stuff at the high school, power school. So, you know, we do some bootcamps that really help new teachers go along too, and. Veteran teachers that need refreshers, and we had veteran teachers participate. So, just an idea, we wanted to float out that we're not married to one or the other.
Were you rose by sire?
I haven't yet, but I certainly can.
Yeah.
I did last, I did.
Maybe two extra days for parents with kids out.
Yeah.
Right, I don't think they're gonna be opposed to it. They never know.
Well, this would be. The two days wouldn't impact.
Oh, yeah, maybe before.
Maybe before school.
Yeah, so I mean, but it's always nice to. Yeah, it is, it is two days out, cuz it's, it's two days at the end of the year that aren't there anymore. Right, so that might be better.
Yeah.
Well, I know, the feedback we usually get. Well, I think, I think, but I, I think the concern obviously for me is, you know. If you, if you take two days off the end of the year, and I know we say, well, you know, how valuable are those days if they're in the year around more late? Well, does that move? Two days sooner, now we're, now we're winding down a little two days sooner. And so I think that's, that's obviously the question, and I know it's a bigger deal at the high school because of the schedule. Where you get this this disconnect, I'm not sure at the elementary and the middle school, how much they care when the semester, when the quarter breaks are, cuz. They just roll, and you know, it's, 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 it's less of an issue there, for sure, and I think, you know. Yeah. Yeah, maybe, maybe, maybe the high school becomes a a different.
I don't think it'll be, do you agree the way, I just know every year that we continue to do it, it's gonna become more discrepant since we started.
I know.
How the calendar moves every year. So at what point do we say we're gonna. Stop giving grades and let kids learn throughout the whole year and not worry about semesters and quarters?
Yeah.
That's a ways down the road.
I know.
Oh, wait, I heard a soapbox.
Yeah, I I I I agree with you, I think that it is a. It's, it's a challenge, and I don't, there's no great answer to that, and. You know, we we try to finish before the, before the break, I know there's other districts that roll through it, and there's advantage and disadvantages in both, I. My sister's school, they roll through, and then they come back, and they have a couple of days, and they go to finals, and it's. And I I hear the pavement suffering that goes with that because students. They don't, you know, there's. Well, I was on the calendar committee. So. And I don't know, it's a. And it was, it was, maybe my parents in there, and it was, I mean, it was pretty unanimous at that point in time. And we wanted to stop when the kids were done, not bring them back, trying to test two days after.
Yeah.
And the thing that I would study is the most important person in the classroom, for teaching. Is the teacher. Doesn't matter number of kids, doesn't, the studies on us, right, it's a person in front of it, so we can support that person at the front of the room. Okay, they become a better teacher. You know, we're gonna get more on, those two days may be more than just taking two days if kids not. You know, we can, we can support them and help them and. And I just wonder if there's. Obviously, this is just, you know, informational, so just having a discussion, I just wonder if this created things to do, you know, we won't tackle. Rather than lump all the extra days in the fourth quarter, you know, if you scatter them in, you know, at the tail end, and you come back, and maybe there's ways to go back and. And try, you know, come back from one of the breakings, those first few days back are kind of a reassessment, so then when you go back and. I I struggled on this in the quarter, and maybe I wanna go back, that. It may that frees up some. Students are not necessarily directly learning in the class, but teachers are there, and there's reassessment, and it's probably a horrible idea that Zach will explain to you why.
You know, we talked about adding them, at least one of them, only having four on the front end, ha- having a third second semester.
Yeah.
It had to be fairly early though, too, so it's not, you know, in May, I think, as far as momentum, the continuing to focus on.
I know.
Whatever those initiatives and the work is.
And we talked at one point about a J term, and that, and we invested that, but that just didn't seem like it was gonna fit in well with what we're trying to do, but. You know, even maybe applying to the pre-technical education focuses, I don't know if there's a way of, you know. Do we take a period of time, and is there a way to get local businesses, like, you know, you're at the high school, whether you're gonna, you're gonna bottom, this is a week everyone can go out on internships and.
Yeah, we talked about having an ICAP week two when we come back.
Yeah.
And again, I think it was, we wanna concentrate all four or five of those days right after Christmas. Or is it better or more appropriate to spread them out and utilize some seminars at different times throughout the course of the year to. To reinforce and reiterate some of that stuff.
Cuz I know, we talked about this in the past, as you know, you get that fourth quarter, you know, if you're teaching a class, it's like, how do I, you know, a kid that takes. If you teach it four quarters in a row, you know, that kid that takes a fourth quarter. Are they?
What did they get extra?
What do they get extra for those extra, extra seven, eight days, yeah?
I think the hard part is, I mean, really, think about education, learning should be the constant.
Yeah.
The learning process, for some kids that takes ten days, or some kids that takes fifteen days, other kids that might take twenty days, or around the same standards.
Yeah.
So I don't know if it really matters. But I think just, you know, entertaining or looking at other options is okay.
Yeah.
One of the things I'm thinking of is a little bit different, in terms of, so we're ending a little bit early. And, you know, in that last week in May, there's pretty much no new instruction that's being introduced. How does that impact the summer slide? Each week, good night, you're adding a week or two, potentially depending on how does that impact students when they're going back in the fall. Because you just have. Just a longer span of time. Especially among children. So. Trade offs.
Yeah, it's a good question, I, you know, we're seeing the lower levels is the last couple of days, it's kind of fun, but it's also kind of, it's kind of, here's your, here's your stuff for the. You can work on over the summer to prep for next year, and. What do we do to, those last few days to do that, but. So I think, good discussion. You know, if you've got additional comments, thoughts, thoughts, concerns, share them off with Davis, and. We'll push forward from there. But right now, not doing a consensus one way or the other in terms of, in terms of those, so obviously, we'll take the calendar up, and they'll be public. When we're taking this update, cuz we'll have a public hearing to the calendar, so.
Next month, right? We usually have it in January.
We didn't set up a public hearing for January, so.
Then.
I guess, I guess, well, I guess, January, January is when we'll set the public hearing, and then February will be the public hearing. So, yeah, so our action, you're right, so informational, January, we'll set, we'll discuss it further, and set the public hearing on the calendar. And then, and then. After that, we'll have the February public hearing approval, so, okay. Okay, I spoke planning guide, I'm assuming, Mr. Wyball.
Yeah, again, just informational, not, I would say, solidified yet. One of the the big changes, we made some pretty big changes over the last couple of years in regards to what we, what we've added, we added some English. Classes last year, we added the new science courses, conceptual physics, conceptual chemistry. Fundamental algebra two, so those are some new courses we've added. Over the last two years, we didn't have a whole lot in here that's, that's like a completely new course. We added the Hall and Code, just kind of tied that into the the different courses elective wise, so kids could see like where they would. Maybe fall in that specific category tied to their their interests. No, no differences really with with a whole lot else as far as credits or anything like that. I don't know if this is something that you guys end up approving, or it's always just kind of an informational thing, I think, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, if there's any questions around it, you know, there's, there's potential, we're looking at with. With Kirkwood, trying to add some order curve on the classes, that would be something that we could add in here at some point. We'll start the process, we get back from Christmas the fifth, we have an ICAP day to get ready for our ICAP conferences. On the twentieth and twenty seventh of January, and that'll be where our students and parents, teachers are kind of. Working through those five components, but one of those will be. This part of it, getting ready for course selections for next year. So.
I like the, I think, science graph is nice for the prerequisites and the math, I think, yeah, and there's as well on.
I did.
Yeah, but so I think that's great, I like those, those visuals for families for the prerequisites, so they can understand what classes you need to take when. I don't know if there's, I I haven't.
We tried to get away from a lot of prerequisites too.
Yeah, I know.
Electives.
Yeah.
Just, I mean.
Cuz I, I know we talked about kind of either, you know, what what you really have to have for prerequisite, if we do, if we can kind of. Adding them visually there is always nice that families can see them, it's, sometimes I think they got, I think we talked about that, sometimes they get lost when people like to read through lots of texts, so. If we can double check, and if there's any kind of prerequisites that we can kind of call them out in that section, so you know, if in. In social studies, we've gotta have, you gotta take this course before you can take this course, just to have those called out where they're at, so it would be nice. Any questions for?
What about the third pathways that we're exploring? How does that affect this catalog, is there?
So Kirk, for Kirkwood?
No, we're talking about what what we're exploring with at the end of the. At the end of your high school, you potentially would get any.
Oh, yeah, we just met today on that.
Okay.
We're gonna, we're gonna come back to the board, because the board's gonna have to possibly. Approve a few things as far as graduations concerned, for example, if there's an A A path, and we were talking about this today. I was gonna bring this to you in January, but I'll preview it just real quickly. It, like, let's look at science, for example, tenth graders that take biology. In the past, biology is a required course to graduate from Soul High School. In the past, the district has not recognized, if a student wanted to take biology from Kirkwood. They still have to take our biology to graduate. Would, so we may be coming to the board and saying, hey, we can do this pathway, but will the board accept an equivalent biology class from Kirkwood? Ours, and right now, one thing that. Zach. We we all met with him this morning, sent back with them is. Here, our biology classes. Here, our biology class is aligned to next generation science standards. Can, can you crosswalk a biology course at Kirkwood that also is aligned to those standards? Or let's do an overlap of the two courses to see how tightly they match. So there'll be a few courses because it'd be really difficult for a student to take biology from us and then take biology from it. So we'll be coming to you with a, a few requests and some board approved changes to graduation requirements. As we put this together, but we've got some time right now because phase one is just. The current eighth grade class according to ninth grade, there are only two courses, um, on that path. That we have for that child to take right now, a, um, college and career readiness course. That Kirkwood has curriculum board and then, um, right now, we're talking about a, a computer science or. Our project lead the right course.
So I guess, maybe, maybe I can paraphrase, I think the question might be, so as we hand this off to our incoming freshmen.
Yes.
Parents, uh, and students, but we have like an addendum to this that says, if you want, here, here are pathways. And to do that, this, you know, this.
Kirkwood will be pressed at that time.
Kathy, this isn't, this isn't a career pathway, this is strictly a pathway to an AA, so it's not specific to a career. That's, that's how I see that piece of it. Now, I think down the line, as we look at the CTE areas. Could we also create more opportunities for ninth and tenth careers to take courses in those areas? I think that's a separate conversation that we can, can look at and should look at. Um, sorry, Andrew.
No, I was just, I, I think we're on the same page, but I think the question is just, you know, as we create more options, how do we put, how is that presented in our planning guides? So right, so they go, I'm a freshman, I, you know what, I really want to be a nurse and so, you know, when we eventually get to the spot where you can have, finish with, uh. I just. CNA, you know, yeah, the, this is what you really have to do, this is what's important as you look through the guide, because you're gonna have to do these things to get there. And, or if you want to get your AA, you know, you need to focus on this and, and make decisions that are as smart as you, as you go in this, that's what your, your goal is. Um, and so I think, I think what I'm hearing is the problem, this document will get. Augmented or shuffled, it provides additional input as we add new stuff in there, but it's, for, for next year, it's, it's not. Critical that happens.
No, it, and it will, so, for instance, it's, it's, it'll be a four year. Um, we'll have freshmen, if they choose to, can start taking some college, you'll have all the courses, um, but. We have kid, and, and we're creating three tracks for that. Depending on how much you want to get into it, so there's the, hey, I'm gonna really get into this and. And with the goal of getting my AA as I graduate Soren, that's track one. We don't see a lot of students doing that track, but it's gonna be available if they want to. Track two is, I'm gonna graduate Soren with thirty credits. We already have a lot of kids doing that. And then track three is eighteen credits. And that pretty much are kids that want to maybe get their, their English requirement out of the way by taking comp one, comp two, and oral communications. Um, maybe explore a, a social studies class, uh, as an elective. Or they'll have a personal finance class that we already require, it's Kirkwood credit. And so we're gonna have three different tracks available for whatever pace kids want to go. And these tracks can be, as we get into more electives. If I know I want to go to U N I after this and be a teacher, I, I can start. And Kirkwood and Kathleen here will help kind of direct these students. Well, instead of taking this elective that we have listed, why don't you take intro to teaching instead, it will count in this area. So we'll direct kids to, and just like a college advisor would, and help navigate these kids and families through. If they know kind of what, what route they're going to. And then like Zach was saying, as we get this established, then we'll start looking at some CTE pathways. So they take some of these courses and maybe veer them off towards an academy, their junior senior, things like that, so.
Yeah, I was just suggesting kind of both, like, yes, this is the tracks that we have for AA, and maybe start ready for this consumption. But B, also guiding parents through, and kids, through understanding, I think I have an interest in this. This is what I think I'm gonna wanna be when I grow up, you know, so these are the classes that we recommend.
Mm-hmm.
That works with both majors, courses, career, and, um, to help just kind of tease it out a little bit more. Because it's a long list of courses, it's overwhelming, right, especially when you're making it.
Yes. And it will, I mean, we've got the framework. But it'll really be more solidified and built as this class needs to be. So, you know, we'll, we're gonna really make sure we've got year one as ninth grade, it's two courses. So regardless, you, you might think, you might think, yeah, I'm gonna go after my AA. You know, maybe eighth grader sitting there now, hey, next year when I'm a freshman, I'm gonna start it in my DA. Or, uh, no, I don't wanna do that. I, if, if I could just get, you know, a few courses, that's good enough for me. Well, they can all take, their, their, their freshman year, they can all take the two courses we're gonna offer. And they might change their mind or something. And decide, maybe I will take the thirty credits, maybe I'll go that pathway, or maybe I will. Or, you know, they can go either way they want, but there'll be two good courses that we'll offer onsite. Um, now, you know, like when they get to their junior year, comp one and comp two. Uh, are, you know, that English credit, Kirkwood AA type course. You know, regardless of where you go, it takes care of your English credit, that comp one, comp two, uh, will have a teacher. Certified through Kirkwood to do that onsite, so, um. We don't anticipate a lot of on-campus travel. But when they get up to their junior year, just like, you know, we've got kids going to campus or going to the regional center now, so there's some travel. It'll be a combination of on-campus, at Soren, maybe online.
As you were during, you've got questions, comments, thoughts, feel free to reach out to Mr. Wyball and, uh, share those out with them. Next up on our racial items is board learning dates for January twenty twenty-two, um, this is for. Our day in-person board learning and we were talking about some bits, Davis, do you know what the options we wanted to check the two more?
I know we had to avoid Thursdays and, I mean, first off, shoot for a timed day and what, what's. There's that a team from University of Oregon Iowa that, um, what grant was specifically received. This is significant grant and, and the grant is to, um, just work with boards and, and, um.
The last couple of years, we've done it, we've done it in the morning.
Uh, when, we bet, we used the Catholic church one year.
Yeah, this was the one we, us, Kirkwood the other year.
Oh, in the morning?
It was in the morning.
Okay. Um, yeah, we could do morning, we could do actual, actual.
Is it four hours? How?
We, we actually go about what?
We've been going to half.
Three now?
Yeah.
About three, three and a half hours.
The current family foundation grant facilitation process.
Thank you.
And this part of it will be about an hour and a half, two hours, um, specific to standard number four for Iowa school boards. Leading through some policy ensuring transparent legal operations, they walk through four different, um, policy readership. Legal side, the e- ethics side, and then transparency around it.
So I have a lot for three hours.
Yeah, maybe that, then we're gonna follow up, that's just a little, for the board learning after that, so.
Yeah.
They'll, they'll, they'll buy lunch for us if you want to do like a lunch or dinner, they'll pay for food, that's all part of the grant, so you can go, like, and put that in there.
We can do, we can do an evening as well, it's, I think.
Whenever, yeah, just not Thursdays.
So we're looking at January. And I'm off completing the week of the night.
You're off the week of the night?
I'm in DC, so. We talked about, I think. I mean, the selfish person said, well, I'm off work seventeen, um. But I don't know what other way else the schedules are, if we're trying to do it in the day, that's a holiday.
Thanks for the close, so, no closings.
Yeah, sure.
Thanks, we close.
Yeah, I'm off.
There's a PD day for the.
There's a PD day in the seventies.
That will take you out.
It's a big difference. So that, so, I think that was why Davis don't like that day.
Okay.
So that takes out the admin, which is one of the things we like to do together, so, uh. I knew there was a reason that Davis didn't like that day, um.
Do you like that week? Something weak?
I don't have any.
That week is, that week is far enough out for me that it's still open, um.
Tuesdays are out, I mean, from, from the four.
Tuesdays are not great for me in general, but. Uh, Friday that week looks fine, Wednesday that week looks fine for me.
Thursday afternoon, the nineteenth. What, you would want?
The nineteenth of the morning?
You want morning instead?
Well, nineteen, nineteen's bad all day.
Oh, okay. Friday, the twenty-first.
Is there a day, because?
Oh, I mean.
What about, uh, uh, Tuesday evening, um, we have to.
Twenty-fifth?
Yeah. You know, we could do a five o'clock just for meeting. Three hours, five thirty.
That works.
There's no, there's no home basketball that night, because I think we're. Five thirty?
Five thirty?
Five, five thirty, five thirty generally works better for Dan.
That way we can, what, Zach, no lunch out of, no dinner out of it?
Yeah, yeah, again, um, maybe if you can just try to find one more day, just in case.
Yeah.
Okay. It has to be like, in the, it can be the first part of the word, too, I think.
Yeah, yeah, well, I, we just said January, because that's generally what we've done this January.
Yeah.
I don't think there's anything that says it has to be in January, it's just, that's what we've historically done it. Um. That following Tuesday works for me as well.
First.
Yeah.
That works, that's the better. Same time, five thirty?
Yes.
A basketball game.
Yes, sir.
We got toys, well, maybe it's a way, I'm gonna be traveling that day.
What about, uh, Thursdays, we said are out, um.
The previous eighteenth, that you think doesn't work?
Eighteenth of January?
Thirteen of that day?
Yes, there is, that's a bad night, that's very a double ladder.
Right.
Zach will be mad if I don't make it, not that I care a whole lot, but you know, it's, it's stuck in all the bodies there, not Zach, Casey. Because it's stuck in all the bodies there to cover two gyms, so I try not to miss those. I can do Thursday, twenty. You know, Thursday, Thursday's are.
February did, February first didn't work, that's boy, girl app that.
Yeah.
You're traveling, Cass is traveling.
Okay.
What about, uh?
Monday the twenty-fourth.
January?
January.
Evening, morning?
Huh?
Evening or morning?
I've got three things to remember about.
I can't remember. Okay, Mondays. Or that's boy, girl basketball, boy, spin it is.
Like, what about that, or, what about Monday the seventh of, you can't do Monday, just that.
I just can't do Tuesdays.
You can't do Tuesdays?
Tuesday from ten to four.
Okay.
Tuesday evening.
What about Monday, the, Monday the seventh of the evening?
Yes, that works for me.
I, Mondays, from four to six.
Thank you.
So we give you six o'clock, six issue.
Yeah.
Six issue.
I, I could do something that starts at six.
So six o'clock on the, Monday the seventh would be the other option?
February seventh?
Yes, February seventh, yes.
And I could tell her that, we just start maybe with dinner for half hour, just kind of hanging out, maybe we could do that.
Yeah.
I'll throw those two dates, um, at them.
Okay, thank you, thanks.
So twenty-fifth at five thirty or?
Seventh.
Seventh.
At six. Okay, um, next up, we have our homework for learning. So we got the homework from Chris. That we were supposed to go through on the eight traits of effective school boards. Everyone have a chance to, right, and do your homework? It was an interesting read, um, I think a lot of them, a lot, I think you've heard a lot of this in the past, when we've done I S P. Um, I think the, well, Chris and I chat about this, I kind of, kind of, there's the eight traits, high expectations, good goals. Um, I think maybe we just can chat as we go through, there's a, there goes rankings that we're supposed to do, just kind of try and assess in terms of how we're doing on that. Um. And I think the biggest thing is to try to look at areas where maybe we are, as well as. Here is where we think might be an area to focus on, um. Maybe, maybe we'll leave this, I'll read them off and kind of go around and kind of identify one area that you guys thought was maybe an area for growth. I think that's one of the later questions we've got on here, so high expectations, good goals, least of all children learn, focus on achievement. Collaboration and communication, uh, data savvy, goals and resources are aligned, team leadership and team training. So Jamie, was there anyone that you, if you looked through that you thought was maybe more of a challenge? Or maybe you'd start with the apps or the end books to be ready to.
Well, and it, just, uh, well, these are hard, because we do a lot of these pretty long.
Yeah.
You know, I mean, and, um, you know, the one thing, and this is probably my own, but are we data savvy? You know what I mean? I mean, we look into the data, but I don't know that, and I think we're data savvy, but I don't, I'm not data savvy. How's that for an answer?
Yeah.
You know, I mean.
I have a question, I think, we, we do look a lot of data, there was, it's one of the ones that I identified, so, you know, I think we could be a little bit more particularly on. On data that is, I think you do a good job of looking at data in terms, at the board table, in terms of what's going well and identifying. How, how to, how to do that, and then, you know, we get focused on one particular thing, which is, okay, this is an area concerned based on data, we take it good. But at least at the board level, we don't have broad discussions about broader areas where, okay, this is the challenge, this is the challenge and how to, that, that was, that was what I had identified as in my mind, so.
Well, I said data savvy as well, but I took a different lens of it.
Yeah.
Because you can look at the data in the rear and you can say, oh, this is really wrong, or this is what we're doing well. I would rather say, what do we want the data to be? And have that a little bit more aligned to our goals, so then you can say, okay, here's the actions that we're going to take to get to where we want to be.
I mean, yeah, I, I, we do that a little bit with the, when we said that, because I give it on Siap, where you said the ninety, ninety percent efficiency. So I think the question, you may be raising is, do we need additional data other than kind of broad level proficiency scores to, to go into our goals? And say, we want to look at these additional things rather than just. Proficiency, so that's, that's a good point, just be. Does that still meet our needs, you know, focusing at, at that, at that broad lens? Looking forward, is that enough, or we need to, to look at something more, more granular?
Mm-hmm.
So I, that's a, that's a good question. Kathy, you have another one, or is that your biggest one?
Well, I kind of put those two together, so then, if you have data savvy, then are your goals and then your resources aligned perfectly? So if you set a target of where you want to be, then you can back that up with. Resources that each, to where you need to go.
Well, it's a good thing that you are on the budget committee, because that is one of the things that they are, is it goes in the budget, as we talk about priorities. Um, Davis can talk a little bit about this, in the background, that's one of the things that goes on, which is, okay, how do we, we said these are our priorities. How are we investing our money in that? So the budget committee is tasked with, with making sure that the budget aligns for priorities. And we talked about professional development, to make sure the budget, budget there, and so, a lot of that stuff goes on in the background on the, and I appreciate the budget committee's work on that. Um, because a lot of that happens in the background, because it's not something we can do as a, as a whole board to make sure that there's an alignment there, because we'd spend. Weeks sitting up here and everyone in the audience would get bored with us as we, as we spent all that timeline, so. Um, Jamie, did you have any, another one you wanted to, to call out?
Well, the, I mean, the data savvy thing, I, like Dan said, I'm not, I'm just not, and. There, I think. There are. There are some, some things that I think are harder to measure. But we've always got these goals for our kids to achieve test scores of this test score, that test score, all these test scores. But how are we, how do you measure whether they're ready to get out in the real world? Like, that's, how do you, how do you measure that?
I know we were, I S P, the one guy joked, it's like, you know, my, my goal of success is that, is that my kid is not living in my house when they turn twenty-two. That, that, that was their pure measure of success, is, you know, they reached twenty-two and they're no longer living in my house.
Worth days today, you're not in the house.
So, you know, I, I joked about that, but I think, I was like, what, what do we tell Josh that that's, that's, that goes in our goal series? Like, how do you measure that? Kid does not live in my house when they reach age twenty-two.
So I just, I think there are some things that I'm just not sure how we, I, we can do test scores and standard test scores and compare ourselves to. All of these other schools and kids and whatever, but how successful are our kids gonna be when they go out into the real world? How do we measure that?
And and are we meeting their needs, I think we talk about this a lot, just, you know, every student is different in terms of where they wanna go. And, you know, whereas I like math, I like reading, I like science. I pointed these bowls and to find out, because I don't want to participate in them. Yeah, how do you, how do you assess, you know, that individualized plan is, Dan said many times, it's like, in your world, every student would have an individual plan. Then we take them from kindergarten through graduation, where we're focused on meeting each of their individualized needs. We don't have that budget or that capacity to do that, like Jamie's principle, which is how do we, how do we better meet their needs and assess what they need? We try to do that, I think, as post-graduation survey, maybe we need to revisit that and see if we're getting the data we need out of that. Um, are we still doing the invites back for kids there at, the winter after their first year of college?
Had, well, obviously, we have the last.
Yeah, I know.
Uh, I think, I think the last one we had was two thousand nineteen, where they had a panel come back.
Yeah.
Kids, just actually talking with our. Athlean or Kirkwood person yesterday, but she's trying to figure out, looking at some data. That she collects to measure her success as the career counselor. Um, and one of the things we were looking at was, um. At insight, the department of Ed, and post-secondary, like kids who are graduating from two-year, four-year college. Or kids who are, you know, math or obedience, they get to to college. But, and I think, I think the department of Ed would say also that some of that information is not always accurate. And it's outdated, so that's one of the hardest data points to collect, because it's sending out the survey, or you're filling out the survey. So.
Well, yeah, I'm a major post-secondary kid, I mean, post-high school kid, so, okay, we can fail. Uh, but that, you know, that brings a bias in some. Yeah, that's right, that's right.
So, uh, I think I just want to touch on, I think it was a good exercise to go through this. Um, you know, what trait would be most valuable, as important to focus on? You have to spend time focusing on one. Um, and you kind of, you know, improve what would be, or we've talked about data savvy is another one. Uh, that we want to spend time on, um, thoughts from folks?
I wouldn't even ask that question earlier, Tim, I actually was looking at that question, this survey, pointing that out. I think having the goals and resources aligned.
It does, yeah. The other one I had is just collaboration communications, I think we can always work on that, it's just you're always trying to, you know, you always need to tweak that, you know. Um, you know, we talked, uh, talk about new methods, you know, you've got your old methods for trying to communicate, but you know. Communication is a two-way street, and so you gotta figure out, you know, it doesn't know if it just, we can, we can sit up here and talk all day long. But when the audience is limited, you know, how do we, how do we reach people that aren't here or aren't online? And we talked about, uh, you know, we touched on with the, with the, with the economist, but, you know, just trying to partner on how do we get information on it? We had this stuff on, on celebration achievement, and how do we, how do we reach out to the economist, you know, and, and how do we partner with them? And maybe, you know, we talked about, okay, so on a part, we talked about, or how do we, you know, how can we get them information so they can put stuff out? Davis and I talked last, last, last month, you know, maybe do we try and get some stuff out in advance, pre-prepping a week in advance? So it can be published on the Thursday when we're actually meeting, so that, you know, it goes out in the community at the same time we're talking, so if we, if we hit those high points. And and that information's gonna be presented, goes out, uh, in a story that that pops up, and so, you know, as we have the students that's talking about, uh, tag. If we kind of prep that material, and then she, we, we do a pre-interview with the economist, and that information goes out to the, the community at the same time. It's another venue for, for getting the information out, or they might not, this, that's what they might be, the economist, it's more timely. Uh, it's, it's, it's an initial word on the administration and the teachers that are prepping stuff, but. It's something we talked about, it's something we could always work on and try and improve, so we get information out there, by the way, so. With that, um, it was a good exercise, um, we talked about dangers, danger signs. There's probably too many, they're, they're a lot longer to go through in terms of reading them out, so probably read them all out. Um. One of the ones I obviously tagged on there was pretty obvious, which is, you know, how do we, how do we get that information out there, I think was one of my, my words, if there's a board, you know, we've got to. We've got, we've got, we've got to make the effort rather than wire, to come for us with the information, how do we do a better job of getting it out there, was kind of the. The other one, the other one I kind of tagged was, uh, you do a lot of more talking about staff development and PD, which is very valuable. Um, I think we can probably do a better job of engaging, you know, Davis and Joshua and the sprints are talking about PD for next year. Um, and I always, I don't necessarily always feel as prepared for that as I, as I should be in terms of thinking, thinking about, about that. Because they come to us and ask for input into the PD for next year, and with everything that's going on at the end of the year, my brain is often not on, you know. On that, so I think that's what, and everywhere that I can do a better job of, of helping with that coordination, which is how, making sure. And asking the questions about alignment to our priorities and how does this move us forward? Um, so those are just a couple that I had, so, I don't think we all said, anything you wanted to share from that one or not?
The only thing was the, you know, the, the board trap of micromanaging the day-to-day stuff. You know, it's, you know, the job, will never be our job, if we try to do that, or does that?
It's, it's a fine line between, uh, holding the system accountable and micromanaging. Right, and you wanna stay on the, away from the micromanaging, but at the same time, you've also gotta be that, you know, we talked about this, yeah, right? Uh, uh, is the loop closed on it, so, yeah. Hey, Jamie or Cassie, anything else you wanna?
I said we were focused on external pressures, mostly on climate increasing in school systems, just a little bit. I have an understanding of how that really impacts.
Yeah.
Us as a community, so I think, um. So that one, I also said, um. What would be, we should keep our eye on is the vision, just as we evolve as a community and grow, we have to reflect that in an updated vision.
Yeah, where, where are we at, there's only, oh, three years or four? We generally do that every five years, and that, and I'm trying to roll out on that, because how many years is the best, the last updated?
As far as our vision and our mission, it's been four years, we tweaked the levels and priorities.
Yes, so the vision, vision mission will probably next school year, so.
And the book we're reading.
So something, as we're looking at the pathways, proficiency work, and looking at, you know, the portrait of a graduate. One of the things that we're talking about as an admin team is really a truly student-centered mission statement.
It's been challenging us as far as looking at our mission statement, our wording, our new vision, so, yeah, we talked about.
So, so timing. And so we just, we generate.
Yep, oh, definitely.
Yep, and I think, you know, the challenge of that is always, you know, the process, you know, we, there's, there's, it goes to Siap, we go to the, we go to the staff. And so we get input from the community, there's, like, the last, who did we get, was A A A help us out with the last time, or who was it?
Yeah, yeah, the first time we did it, Joyce Fisher from S A I, and then, uh, Joe Crozier came in and facilitated the last one.
And so I think it's important to get, so it's, good timing on that one. Uh, Jamie, anything you wanted to? Call out?
No, I, I agree with Dan on the, you know, just making sure that we don't get caught up. The micromanaging kind of thing, I think we do a pretty good job, but I think sometimes you get a little. A little too focused on the, on one area or another, when you need to.
So, next up on our agenda is a closed session, I will need to enter the motion. Uh, moving into closed session, first one to, I will vote section twenty-one point five one time. Motion by Coons. Second, our roll calls. Natalie, you want to call the roll?
All right, roll call, Wolf.
This is a yes or no.
Yes or no, it's keeping here, yeah. Uh, Russell? Yes. Coons?
Yes.
Brown.
Yes. Yeah.
Celesta is absent.
And we have entered, we've entered, uh, closed session, we will stop the recording. I've got it seven thirty-one, so we'll stop the recording there, you know, seven P M. Session, uh, with that, Davis, I don't have anything, our next meeting is in January, um.
January, January one.
That's what I'm trying to remember. That's what I'm trying to remember, because I, I put my, I closed down my laptop, I think it's January twentieth. Yes.
Correct. January twentieth.
January twentieth is when we, um. At five thirty P M, uh, here, in the central office conference room, um, if there are. I guess this is where we go around and any, any thoughts? Or we. Um. I was over here.
I was as well.
Four to forty to drive to O'Hare and fly to Montana, so.
So, I guess I'll, I'll sum up, I think it was a good meeting, I always like seeing the, the funding, so, it's, it's, for, yeah, my dear, pardon me, celebration achievement. We do a lot of other business, but I think, you know, I've all.
For sure.
I wish the other day is, is, uh, is, uh, to make sure that we're impacting students in a positive way, and I think that's always a good opportunity to do that. So that's kind of my general thought on the meetings, uh, we do a lot of the business, uh, we save the district a hundred thousand dollars in.
Yeah.
Interest payments, um, and so that'll be good, hopefully we get that done before the, uh, the Fed raises the prime rate. Which I guess is probably supposed to happen three times in twenty twenty-two, so we'll hopefully get it in before that happens, so. With that, I'll enter in a motion to adjourn, motion by Wolf, second by Coons, all of them, they're signified by saying aye, aye, we stand adjourned.